Uh, without further ado, can I have a roll call?
Chairman Henry.
Here.
Vice Chair Parks.
Yes.
Commissioner Ochowski.
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Turnbull. Commissioner Salem.
Here.
Okay. Can I hear a motion in a second for approval of the agenda? So move.
Second.
Approval agenda. In a roll call.
Chairman Henry.
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks.
Yes.
Commissioner Ochowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Salem.
Yes.
Okay. Public comments on agenda items only. Are there any comments on the agenda? Hearing none. We'll move for approval of the minutes from August 22nd, 2024. Motion for approval in a second.
Chairman.
Second.
Roll call.
Chairman Henry.
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks.
Yes.
Commissioner Ochowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Commissioner Salem.
Yes.
Item number five. You have a presentation.
Yes, Chris Barr is going to be giving us a presentation on the Landmark Dividend for Verizon. We've talked into this, so welcome, Chris.
Excellent, excellent for having you guys. As you mentioned, my name's Chris Barr. I'll try to make this brief as possible, and you guys have a lot to get to today. Just a quick little bit about me. I'm a local front in Champaign here, born and raised, graduated from Centennial High School. And my family's also been involved in real estate in Champaign for, gosh, 70 years now. So I've got a pretty good career in the industry as a whole, especially this market here in Champaign. So it's great, that is my dad and uncle Art who've been doing business here in Champaign. I'm not with our real estate, I'm here representing Landmark Dividend, as you guys can see by the slides. So I'll get into a little bit of who we are and exactly what we do. So we're a third-party aggregator of telecom leases. And as you can see up on the slide, we work with a range of clients out. We work with municipalities, municipal entities such as your cells. We work with large corporate landlords who have, you know, multiple cell tower antennas on their sites. And if you think about where our cell towers are, a lot of times smaller rural farms still go and work with individual landlords on a three-year basis as well. So that's a little quick snapshot of who we are. You know, we were established in 2013. We're the Vegas most highly-funded aggregator of these leases. We're a subsidiary of Digital Bridge. They're a PE firm currently valued at about $60 billion. Just got a billion dollars outside investment at the beginning of this year. So again, you know, definitely have funding resources to complete these transactions. So enough about really Landmark and who I am, kind of getting into who you guys are, what you have. You have on One Weight Washington a cell tower panel and, slide's almost going to be made up. But you guys have a cell panel on your site in One Weight Washington, which Verizon has an easement bond. What exactly are these easements and how really do they work? Do you go one more slide? So these easements are basically a agreement you guys have with Verizon that allows them to put their equipment on your guys' site and access that site to improvements on the equipment, et cetera. So to be clear, they do own the antenna, but you guys are the landlord of that site. And to secure that easement and to make sure that you're compensated for that easement, you guys have a lease with Verizon. So Verizon's currently paying you guys just shy of $1,400 a month, $1,391, to be able to, you know, use that cell site to kick out cell signal to the community. Essentially, what Landmark Dividend is looking to do is purchase that lease from the Champaign Housing Authority. So why exactly go through this transaction? You know, it's found money to you guys, it didn't cost you anything to have Verizon approach you and give you $1,400 a month. So why exactly would you want to get rid of it? Well, in every single one of these cell tower leases, and it's not unique to you guys, it's every single one, they have a termination clause that states that Verizon can seize paying rent and take down their equipment within usually 60 to 90 days for any reason that they're choosing. So again, what we're looking to do is come along and buy that easement and buy that lease for guaranteed cash upfront. Currently, Miguel and I have been working together. We have an offer you guys can ask for $290,000. And so that's guaranteed cash on the table versus an unguaranteed lease. Why exactly would we want to buy it if it's not a guaranteed revenue stream? Well, again, we are part of a larger fund. We've got about 6,000 of these assets currently in our portfolio. So if one of our leases goes away and they take a tower down, it doesn't happen often, but it can happen, we have 6,000 other assets to fall back. For you guys, it would just be a $1,400 shortfall in your guys' budget each year. So in exchange for that lease, we'd be willing to fund you guys $290,000 upfront to purchase it. Not sure what the room's knowledge of cap rates and how, you know, lease pricing terminology works. A cap rate is basically the income divided by the purchase price. It's how people assess real estate on a cursory level around the country. If you look at national brick-and-mortar trading, they're also keep in mind, lower the cap rate, the higher the purchase price, the higher the cap rate, the lower the purchase price. Champaign's sitting at about a six and a half to seven cap market. The rest of the country's currently about a six cap market. We are currently have an offering to you guys for a five and a half cap. So we're willing to pay a five and a half cap on unguaranteed payback, where bricks and mortar's are going for about a six and a half, seven in this market. It's a big reason why landlords end up doing these transactions, they can find other properties to invest into. In your guys' case, Miguel and I have been talking significantly about youth build. This is a cause that's really near and dear to my heart. I do a lot of these transactions around the country. Very rarely am I able to do one, A, in my hometown, which is such a privilege to be back. But B, I do care about what happens in Champaign. My family still lives here, I'm still involved in this community. My dad is involved in a significant amount of youth violence outreach. So to be able to move forward with a transaction where I truly believe in the use of proceeds and being able to fund youth build with $290,000 for this variety of projects you guys have going on, in exchange for us buying an unguaranteed revenue stream, it's, as I said, it's a transaction structure that I genuinely believe in on my side about the use of proceeds, which I can't often say for a lot of these transactions. So I know I threw a lot at you really quick. Again, I'm trying to keep it brief so you guys can move on to other agenda items, but happy to feel any questions you guys might have this time. Please.
I'm not sure if this would be much of a word for, often, how, do we have a, like, an end date on our lease with Verizon currently?
We currently do, it's in 2047. So you guys have about 23 years left of guaranteed term on that lease. And again, they do reserve the right in their termination clause. And if you, at any point, want to get in touch with me, I'm happy to pull up the specific language and highlight it. But they do reserve the right to walk within 16 days for any reason they're choosing prior to that time. So they do not need to wait for lease expiration to take down the site if they choose to do that.
And so I'm assuming within that lease, there's some sorts of information about, like, if the tower, like, damages our property? Does that still, is there still something within their, like, you know, their equipment or whatever, cell tower, tall center, is on our roof? Like, if it fell down and hurt our roof and we had to get a new roof, like, does that change at all with you all owning the lease instead of?
No, and in fact, that's one of the other big reasons that landlords come to us and approach us, is we have an entire asset management team. So I was working with a rancher in Colorado who had a tower on their site. Verizon left the gates to their ranch open when they came to work on the site and all their cattle gap. And so they'd spend the day around their camp. So they'll specifically reach out so they can utilize our asset management teams with the gates on between you guys and Verizon for any reasons that you guys need. And yes, they are obligated to, you know, correct any damages that might happen. But again, we can help facilitate that communication. The other thing is, just out of curiosity, are you guys doing any marketing efforts on this site to try to bring on additional tenants or additional revenue or additional towers or panels at all?
No, not around the cell towers or anything like that, but we're always leasing the property.
And that's the case of, oh, what often with landlords is, you know, either whether they're a housing authority, whether they're a farmer or a real estate investor, reaching out to telecom companies to try to bring on additional revenue is not part of their daily agenda. So that's something that we do on each one of these deals, is we'll be marketing this rooftop to try to bring on additional tenants to it. If and when that happens, we split all that revenue going forward with you guys' 50-50. So it'd be the $290,000 at close, and then it would be 50% of all future revenues, which would be actively marketing to try to bring on this site. Any other questions, Tom? Excellent. Thank you guys so much, we appreciate the time.
Thank you. Did you want to discuss this earlier date or what?
Yeah, I think we can discuss it at a later date. So, you know, just wanted to bring it to the board's attention what the proposal was, but we have not internally made a decision, so.
I don't want to catch you off guard, but what's your feelings about that?
I don't know, I think Miguel and I still have to discuss it a little further, so we can bring back some more information.
You and your staff and everything?
Yes.
That's great.
We can bring back more information at the December meeting on whether or not that's something we'll take advantage of.
Okay, appreciate it. Okay, well, we're down to item six, our new business, and we have some resolutions that we need to get approved today. So the first one is 2024-7, approval of the 2025 administrative plan. So we're going to have some discussion on that and get your recommendations.
Yes, there was just, I think at the last meeting, Jennifer went over the changes, and so there was just, it's been out for public comment, and so we're just asking the board to approve the admin plan now.
If those board members had any questions or anything, I'll make a recommendation that we approve the 2025 administrative plan. I'd like to have a motion in a second.
I move that we accept resolution 2024-7.
Second.
A roll call.
Chairman Henry.
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks.
Yes.
Commissioner Ochowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Commissioner Salem.
Yes.
Next one is 2024-8, approval of the Moving to Work 2025 Annual Plan.
So Stephanie is going to come up and give a presentation on the changes. It's been out for public comment. And we actually, so thank you all for being so flexible to move the meeting this early in the month because we've got to get the plan submitted about the 15th. So she's going to go over the changes for this 2025 plan, and we're excited about some of the things we have going on.
Can you kind of take the full slides, or do you have more of this information over? For like the community.
I'm so far, I'm sorry.
So these are the three new activities proposed for 2025. The first one is Home Is Possible, which is a homeownership program. As you know, we already have a homeownership program, but that's more with down payment assistance or need help with the second mortgage. But with this homeownership program, it'll be where families can use their PAC, their outstanding assistance payment, to go through a mortgage assistance. So it's really going to be similar to HUD's HCD homeownership program, but there will be some differences between this one and our regular, our local homeownership program that we have. So we wanted to bring that back, we've gotten a lot of interest in it, you know, people coordinating from other alpha authorities where that program is available, so we kind of want to establish that again. So they'll still be on our housing program, however, instead of that payment going to the landlord, it'll go towards their mortgage, whatever they're owed before. The second activity is Affordable Housing Acquisition and Development Fund. And this is enacted out of HACC, so we request $5 million from our public reserve that we can have on hand. So like when we want to acquire property or, you know, let that money readily available versus having to go through that process to request it, because sometimes that can cause delays. So when we want to, you know, develop properties or we can also provide financing to instruction to development companies who do want to build in our community. So this will allow us, like I said, just to have that money right away versus slowing down the process, we can get things started immediately. And then finally, our third activity is Emergency Housing Support Services. So we will be partnering with local homeless services agencies to improve services for the liberal homeless, for individuals and families in Champaign County. And this activity allows us to provide immunity dollars and financial support for emergency housing and help secure temporary housing for those currently living on the street. Any questions about any of those activities?
If there's no questions, I'll make a...
Oh, she's got more modifications on the next page.
Oh, you guys.
Those are the new activity. Now, we modified some of our former activities that have already been approved by HUD. So one of those is our LSS program. As everyone knows, we have our SHIP program where our families can earn incentives as they accomplish goals. And prior, we had a 12-month waiting period that they had to be compliant on our program for at least 12 months. We decided to eliminate that. We want our parents, I mean, not our parents, but our clients to be able to get in the program right away versus having that time frame they had to wait. But we feel like it's just very beneficial to them. Additionally, when our families become zero hack, means they increase their income to the point that will determine it from the program. Instead of removing them from the program after 60 days, we raise that time to 120 days. Also, our local homeownership program, we eliminate the minimum income for homeownership. Because one of the requirements is they have to be pre-approved by a lender anyway, and they already established those guidelines for us. And so we have some channels we have not quite made that amount, but have been approved with the board approval for the program. So we decided to eliminate that part of it. And then also, households applying for homeownership must be enrolled in our SHIP program. So then they can earn additional incentives for working towards homeownership. With our sponsor-based voucher program, we included working with three additional populations. So those who are going to help their substance abuse, so we're going to work with a, send out a request for those service providers to become in partnership with us. We are expanding reentry, as you know, we work with first followers and wind recovery, but we also have people who have not gone to those programs who have, you know, a judicial past that we want to be able to help them as well. And then also, we'll be working with Cunningham Children's Home. So we have our FYI program, was worked with foster youth, but some of the children that are in these programs aren't eligible for that program, you know. So this will allow us to provide voucher and housing for that population as well. Then we have the small business opportunity, Work Worth Development Center. So our Work Worth Development Center will be out at our new office location next week. And addition to that, we will now have a tiered approach to funding for the small business program. Prior, they could just apply for $10,000 worth of funding, but we decided to do a tiered approach instead. So for the first tier, we call it the foundational grant, which is for $5,000. A lot of our families or people interested in homeownership, they use that $10,000 to take business classes or, you know, get that development side of things. So when they actually got their business started, they were running out of funding. So we decided to do a foundational grant where they can use that money to work on their education, business classes, get business coaching, get assistance, get their business plan together, et cetera. And then a second part of that would be their small business grant, which is up to $10,000. And that's what they can use on actual expenses like licensing, insurance, equipment, inventory, whatever it takes to get their business up and moving. And then finally, once they've established and doing well, if they maybe want to expand on their business, then they can apply for a small business grant that we do. They would have to repay, but it would be repay a wide-low interest rate. Supportive services, the funding just has been increased from $200,000 to $300,000. And for Midbury Cheltzer, we also have a little increase to recover the property, the property that we're going to use for that program. Any questions so far?
Thank you, Stephanie.
Okay. Well, there was no questions, so I assume we're ready for approval of the Moving to Work 2025 Annual Plan. Motion in a second.
And would we approve resolution 2024-8, the Moving to Work?
Been properly moved in a second. Roll call.
Chairman Henry.
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks.
Yes.
Commissioner Ochowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Commissioner Salem.
Yes.
Okay. The next one is Resolution 2024-9, approval of project-based vouchers for Maple Grove Central.
All right, so Maple Grove Central is the property located at 209 North Central in Havana, and we purchased it in partnership with RPC. And it is going to be an expanded opportunity to house the formerly homeless. And so we have attached project-based, well, we are asking the board to allow us to attach project-based vouchers to that development. And there's a total of eight that we'll be attaching on the contract.
You said eight?
Eight.
Okay. Can we get a approval for 20...
I would approve resolution 2024-9.
Roll call, please.
Chairman Henry.
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks.
Yes.
Commissioner Ochowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Commissioner Salem.
Yes.
Okay. The next item is approval of Cubic Development Contract.
All right, so this is for a development consultant. Last month, I believe, we brought the RFP and asked to award the contract, and this is just us bringing the contract back for Cubic Development.
Approval for a motion in a second.
So move.
Roll call.
Chairman Henry.
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks.
Yes.
Commissioner Ochowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Commissioner Salem.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Item number 10 is discussion of the 2023 audit.
Okay, and I think Miguel is going to talk about that during the financial section, so I guess we could kind of...
Table that till we get to his report.
Until the financial report.
Okay. It's time for executive officers' report.
Can I have a question, Mr. Chairman? On this handout, there was, on the back of one of the pages, your title, four items, some other items that we have been published. Is that intentional or?
I think that was from last year's.
Oh, but we just still on PowerPoint.
I modified it, so I...
Okay, I just want to make your little...
Thank you.
All right, so first we want to recognize our champion of the month, Mr. William Connors. So what was written about Mr. Connors is that he has earned the title of champion of the month for his exceptional dedication to his role as a maintenance tech. His consistent hard work and reliability have been invaluable assets to the team. Not only does he consistently meet deadlines, but he also goes above and beyond to ensure that the facility is well-maintained, operating smoothly. Mr. Connors' commitment to excellence is evident in his meticulous attention to detail and his positive attitude. His dedication and reliability make him a true champion on our team. So congratulations, Mr. Connors. We appreciate you, all the ladies. And Dwayne and Robin, would you all like to say anything about Mr. Connors?
All right, yes. I'm making supervisor here. This is really good work. He's really good. I thank God for him because, hey, without him, you know, helping us, and, you know, he knows a lot, and he's always there when we need him. So I'm glad to give you this award.
Well, congratulations, Mr. Connors.
We have a certificate, a trophy, and a gift card for you. Thank you so much.
All right, and we have some activities in operation, so... First off, we attended the NARO Conference last month, and there we won eight awards for Pine Wood Place, our Community Rescue Plan, which was our partnership with both our, the City of Havana, the county, and the City of Champaign for all of the ARPA funds that we received. I think we were the second highest-funded agency through ARPA in the county. And so just detailed in, detailed the partnership and how we expended those funds and won that award. The Youth Build Habitat Build, Education and Community Connection Initiative, the Mental Health Initiative, Next Steps Program, Youth Build City Grant Initiatives, and the Home Is Possible Initiative. So we won eight awards, and that was pretty cool. And several staff and board members attended. It was a really, really nice conference. And the hurricane didn't hit us. We were a little worried about it. Next up, you may have noticed that we launched a new newsletter that we'll be sending out monthly, and we've called it The Housing Hub. It's corny, but that's the name we came up with. And so that's going to go out monthly, and it's just our new effort to really try to keep the community educated on what we're doing. I hear a lot that people don't know what's going on at the Housing Authority, so just trying to get that out. And so if you see it, make sure to share it on your social media and whatever else you have to get that information out. We didn't have a meeting in September, and so some of this is August's news, but Youth Build did have another graduation. And so this is for the class of 2024. We were really excited for them, and it was held at the Orpheum Theater. And then on the next page, we've got a picture of all the graduates. And then we also started a new cohort for Youth Build, and they have selected 21 young people. They literally, the day af, the Monday after graduation, they had mental toughness, and so they jumped right in, the staff didn't get a break. And they invited over, I think they invited around 50 young people to the, to the, to mental toughness and selected 21 of those 50, so. And then some housing choice voucher program updates. The NTW vouchers are at 92% lease, so that's making a lot of progress. We've still overall got to get our overall leasing up, but NTW is the biggest chunk of that, and so with them being at 92%, that's great.
We selected so many out of the ones you had, the ones that they would get in, are they also going to be trying this time?
Mm-hmm, yeah. So we have 565 people currently out searching, so they have done a very, very job of getting people pulled off the waitlist and screening for eligibility. So of those, an additional 383 people are currently being screened for eligibility. And they have completely exhausted the waitlist from 2023, and we are still waiting confirmation of applicant, the applicants for 2024. So we haven't yet finalized that, that waitlist. But as soon as we do, we'll get notice out to the community so people can check their status. A big part of HCD getting to where they are with lease up is the supportive services. And so in total, in August, we spent $55,000, around $50,000, almost $56,000 in supportive services. That includes security deposit, application fees, furniture assistance, transportation, landlord incentives, and utility assistance. And then in September, we spent around $28,000 covering those same areas. And so our LSS and NTW team works really hard to support the volume that HCD is pulling with supportive services. So a lot of these things, like application fees and security deposits, we wouldn't be able to lease as fast if we weren't offering that. And so LSS and NTW team has done a great job at getting people the support they need. Also hosted a back-to-school giveaway at Oakwood. Also hosted a back-to-school giveaway at Oakwood Trace. They had haircuts and, and school supplies and bouncy houses, a really fun activity. So, just wanted to highlight that. We had a press conference with BOLO. In partnership with BOLO, we received a grant from the county for internet for, so, so for, it will provide free Wi-Fi for over 355 HACC clients. And so, we're just working to help bridge the digital divide. And both mayors and the county executive were present at the press release. And so, it was a really fun, they did like a really fun challenge of how, what it's like to be without internet. And we had to see which city represented best, so. Champaign. Youth Build also got their, you know, Youth Build Coalition grant renewed. This year, it was renewed at $329,000, a little lower than what we had been funded in previous years. I think the first year we got it, it was at $420,000. The second year it was at $400,000. And this year it's at $329,000. The biggest reason for the decrease is not performance-based, it's because additional Youth Build programs have been funded through the Coalition. And so, since they're funding additional programs, the war ceiling was a lot lower. So, just wanted to let the board know, but we did receive it, so. Also hosted a landlord lunch and learn on October 9th. And they went over the moving process, the half contract, and the eviction process. And we are going to be sending out some communication, including here, because we don't have the flyer together yet. But we are doing a landlord appreciation dinner in November to just thank our landlords for being a part of the program with us and supporting our clients. And then we also hosted Taco Tuesday on October 1st with our seniors. So, that was really fun. I went out to Steer Place, and I think we all split up and went different places. But they were really appreciative of the tacos. And anything left over, we took it over to Stride Shelter. So, it was nice to kind of get back out there with the seniors and do something fun, so. Thanks to all the staff who volunteered there. An update, I wasn't sure if I informed the board of this. I know it hadn't been in any of my previous reports. I just wanted to make sure that I made you all aware that we did acquire Douglas Square back in early August, I believe it was. And so, that is, that transaction is complete. And right now, there are 17 vacancies there, and our maintenance team is working on getting contractors in to get those units turned. I took a tour of it a couple of weeks ago, and it's really nice. It's in really great shape. We sure did a good job of keeping it up, so. We're excited to have that as a part of our portfolio officially.
Where is this? It's on Bradley.
Yes. Yeah, right on Bradley.
Just a quick comment. Time really flies by because I was on the board when we had groundbreaking, a cut, ribbon cutting for this. And now we're backing up our portfolio. What, 15 years?
Mm-hmm. About 16 years now. And then the last highlight that I have is that construction for Maple Grove began actually today. They had to go in and remediate some mold for the last two weeks, but today is the date that they will commence construction.
The one thing you almost did for ribbon cutting for, I don't know, one of the people that was there came to me and said, "Oh, you're the resident commissioner? Why was he not there?" And I was like, "I didn't know anything about it." Did you say the same about the rest of them?
I believe it was in our last board report.
I don't know, but I was confronted about it, and I couldn't recall being aware of it. Because I wouldn't have came. But he was like, "We didn't have a resident there, and you was the resident commissioner, and you wasn't there." So, I just felt that was, I mean, I feel comfortable when he was saying that, but understanding that people, did you tell them things?
Yes.
When the residents got to do it, because everybody, people are supposed to be, not foolishness, but, you know what I'm saying?
I understand. And then, like I said, Ms. Linda's point, we have our upcoming events for October and November. And so, this is just a little keepsake for you all to know what we have coming up. So, there's a few resident events on here. Also, Ms. Linda, for October, some Halloween and fall things. And then what we have planned for as far as like dinners for the Haven and Washington Square and Steer for November, so. And then that's the end of my report, and next up, financials.
Good afternoon. A little small, which on the other side. On the slide, I just wanted to show the admission of our FPS audit report to HUD. It was admitted on September the 26th. The due date was on the 30th. So, I just wanted to mention that we, we were able to comply with the due date this week before. The next page. As Lady mentioned, we received the audit report. And part of the, part of the whole package that we already before are essentially the FPS report that we submitted to HUD that I just mentioned. There's several other, other parts of it. It's a little, hmm, a little difficult to read. But this is just a page of the opinion, which, as I always mentioned, is the most important part, actually, of the audit report, where it says that financial statements are respected in a, in a fair manner. They are correct, they represent correctly the financial situation of the entity. And it applies to generally affect the public principal. So, that's, that's the, the opinion of the auditors.
And we included the audit report in the board packet. I know it's a lot. So, I have spoken to the auditors about doing a presentation on the audit. And I'm not sure if they will do it at our, we kind of got to see what, if their schedule aligns with our December meeting. If not, we'll try to get them in January to do a comprehensive review of the audit for you all.
Yeah, actually, I, I just want to mention that the, we've been working with, with this company, Madre Ten Company. Actually, before I, I started this position and even before I started the housing authority. So, it's from past experiences as an accountant. It is usually very useful to have auditors that have been working with you for a long time. It is not frequent that the auditors know as much as you, as you. So, I think it's a good relation. I, in several times, I've asked for some advice on some, how to treat some situations in the financial statements. You know, things like the Douglas Square situation, the Central. So, you sometimes need a little bit of accounting advice. This, we did not have a board meeting in the last month, so I did have information for August and September. If you could please put the next one to the left. The summaries of the, of the disbursements that we actually kept. And all the pensions that we announced, the housing authorities carried $550,000 on dispersion. The, being the most important, let's just keep making it over, please, when they are, the next one to you. I just want to mention, as I usually do, the most important disbursements. We had a payment to Penn Foster for $21,000, which, as you know, as you know, it's, it's for Youth Build, the install program. Then the following page, and this is something I wanted to mention. We made, we made the pilot payment for this year. Actually, the pilot is, is calculated from March to, excuse me, from April 1st to March 31st. So, it's not a calendar calculation. So, this one is for April of 2023 to March of 2024. So, actually, we paid housing authority $59,000. And on the next page, so we have the, the payment that was done out of the prospect senior account for their, for their pilot. September, please. In September, and this is something that I mentioned a few minutes ago. We made a payment for 2DS Customs Consortium for the fencing of Maple Grove Manor. Some people were more, and one more. Their best payment over there for almost $33,000. And to the next page, the demolition and mold treatment of Maple Grove Manor, that was previously mentioned before, for $150,000. So, those were the, the most important disbursements in the past two months. If you could please go to the next page. One more, please.
It kind of came up weird, but we have, we have it in front of us on.
Okay. Well, this is the repeat act of our budget. As of September, I want to mention that as far as revenue, we are slightly ahead of our budget, 5.3% ahead of the budget. As far as expenses, we are over the budget about 7.7%. And one thing that I wanted to mention is, I think that the real person's budget is showing that we are too much on target. We don't have some disbursements that we have done. Like we mentioned, the acquisition of Central, and those are all facts that we should, we should get back. So, that should, that should leave us back to where we were before.
Thank you, Miguel.
I may be the one of the youngest people in here.
Yes. Yes, we can.
All right. Any other discussion? If there is any other discussion, we will make the recommendation to approve the August and September financial, approval of the financial report. I heard it. Approval, and I heard a second, so we'll, roll call.
Chairman Henry.
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks.
Yes.
Commissioner Obachowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Commissioner Salem.
Yes.
All the way on, that's facing our agenda, 14, if I'm correct. Public comments on non-agenda items. Hearing none. Is there a reason to go into closed session? No reason to go into closed session, so I'd like to entertain a motion and a second for adjournment.
So, move.
Second.
Roll call.
Chairman Henry.
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks.
Yes.
Commissioner Obachowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Commissioner Salem.
Adjourned. Appreciate everybody coming. I know some people had to get out there a little early, so I appreciate all the reports that were given today and participation.